Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting of November 27, 2018 at 6:30. We have a quorum or call this meeting to order. Is there anybody out there that would like to say an invocation this evening? Sir?
No.
No, invocation, sir. The invocation. Okay. If not, please join me in a moment of silence. Please join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is special recognitions and presentations. We've already completed those. Next item is boards and commissions. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. If we could, we'll have the clerk read the list with me.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petition but not vote. No sign-up card is required. Sign-up and oath cards are located on the table in the council chamber. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issues and citizens are given three minutes to speak on all items.
All right. Thank you. Boards and commissions, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. And council, Titusville Environmental Commission, the terms of regular members Mark Conklin, Tammy Nelson, Beth Ann Tucker, and alternate member Jennifer Cotton expire on November 30, 2018. Regular members Conklin, Nelson, and Tucker have expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this commission and have requested reappointment to a three-year term to expire on November 30, 2021. Alternate member Jennifer Cotton advised that she does not wish to be considered for reappointment at this time. Therefore, there will be one alternate member vacancy. Currently, there are three applications on file for your consideration. Mr. William Young, Mr. Tom Perez, and Mr. Brian Bobbitt have expressed their willingness and desire to serve on this commission. Their applications are on your file, and then you have two hard copy applications on the dais.
Thank you, sir. First order would be reappointments. Oops, sorry, I got a light up here. Member Nelson, what's your number?
My number, yes. As you know, I'm sort of passionate about the TEC, and we changed the ordinance to indicate that if somebody had a scientific background that they would be given preference. I think we have some really great applicants, and I appreciate everything everyone has done, but I sort of see this as, as we go into the future, as almost like a think tank where these people can come to us and give us ideas on how to preserve our city. So with that in mind, I would move to appoint Beth Ann Tucker, appoint Tammy Nelson, and then we need to pick a...
Can you hold one second as I have a little more light? Then you can make the motion, okay? Member Stokoe?
I just want to say, I don't know if you guys remember from our visioning and our goal-setting, one of our goals was to kind of look at our boards and see, and I don't know about you, but when I saw how many applicants we have for positions, it made me very excited because I think that this is something that we were wanting. We were wanting to see a good pool of people to pull from, not just kind of, you know, potentially just keeping the same people on the board, reappointing, and keeping things status quo, and I think that this is a really good opportunity for us to kind of really look at these applications, see potentially about bringing on some new people. And then I did want to, I know we have multiple applications, I did want to point out Brian Bobbitt. He's with Keep Our Bar Beautiful. I know him quite well, excellent background, very involved, and just has this really drive to do more, to try to bring in some new ideas, and I think he would be a huge asset to the board. So I just wanted to share that.
Okay. Anybody, oops, look there.
Yeah.
Member Nelson?
I would agree with you. I did have coffee with Brian. He has a lot of great ideas for the city, and he is very energetic. Tammy Nelson, of course, is a former relative by marriage, and she's an environmental engineer. Beth Ann has, Tucker has a background in environmental sciences. Brian doesn't have a degree, but he does do a lot of conferences, like four or five a year, in environmental issues. So we do have some absolutely great people. Tom Perez has a chemistry background, and Bill Young has offered, and he is the director of the Solar Energy Commission. So, I mean, we have some great people. I think if I was, in talking to Mr. Young, I think if anybody was not going to be appointed or was going to be appointed as an alternate, he probably would have no problem with that because he is still consulting, but it would be really interesting to have his expertise. So that's my two cents.
That's great. Thank you. Member Jordan?
Yeah, I want to agree with, how do I say this? Dr. Stokoe. As it relates to Brian Bobbitt, what I really want to see on a lot of these committees is some young blood. You know, all of us except one person is a millennial here, and I just think that it is necessary for this city to thrive that we make sure young people get involved in what's going on here. And so I'm going to be casting a vote for Mr. Brian Bobbitt. The rest, I understand experience, we definitely need to have the experience, but we definitely need some new blood on this committee so we can go forward for sure. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I obviously, you know, think that young blood's extremely important, but what stood out to me, and I think Member Stokoe said something along those lines already, is that in our two years of going over the boards and commissions, this is the most impressive group of applicants in number, in quality, in qualifications. So I really was kind of listening to you guys who may know some of these people because I'm not familiar with the people, but by resume, by application, I'd almost have to, if I was hiring, I'd have to have a sit-down and talk to them because they're just all so qualified. That is so refreshing to see.
You have the floor as the nomination, then? You asked, you started?
So as I understand it, we need one, two, three regular members, correct?
Correct.
And in that case, I would nominate Tammy Nelson, Beth Ann Tucker, and Brian Bobbitt.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
And then we need an alternate.
Would you like to do it?
Can I move to appoint Tom Perez as the alternate?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those, any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And the opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Would you please make sure, City Manager, that Mr. Conklin gets a letter of appreciation for his service?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. Next item is petitions from the public present. Is there anybody that would like to speak tonight on any item that isn't on the agenda?
I'll go first.
Sir? You are believer first.
The sole purpose...
Sir, just please get up to the mic and your name and address for the record, please.
My name is John R. Goodfellow, 15385 Whispering Willow Drive, Wellington, Florida. I am here on behalf of my employer, KD Construction of Florida. We have placed under contract 300 North Washington Avenue, the 13.138 parcel that's been vacant and is kind of blighted. We'd like to put a landmark building there and rental apartments, and we will come back to you at a later date. I'm working, just started working with Trevor and company. We think that we can do something spectacular there that would really build a foundation for spurring of growth and that revitalization of that whole area. And my only purpose for coming here this evening was to introduce myself, to let you know we want to come back. We will come back with color renderings, elevations, and a description of everything we're proposing to do, and I wanted to learn how we get on the agenda for the next meeting. I was told it was the 10th or the 11th, and that seemed very unusual to me, that they were so close together.
Every two weeks.
Oh, they are every two weeks? Okay. It's going to take us four weeks to be prepared. We won't come in here and waste your time. One of the things that I would like to do, with your permission, is leave each of you with a business card from our company. It has the website identified on it. I would encourage you to look at the product that we built, the type of product that we build. Much of it is going to be much more modern, in my mind, than would fit in the city of Titusville because it's primarily, you know, Dade and Broward-based, and there would be a sensitivity to the type of architecture that's appropriate for the city of Titusville.
Sir, I'm a little confused. Are you representing the Red Canyon people?
No, sir.
Is it the same project?
No, sir.
Is it the same building?
No, this is the, this was the Sandpoint project.
This is the property across from Marina.
Big gap.
Okay.
And now I understand, sir.
Yeah.
I have a...
We're short on time, so I'll keep it really quick. I'm Matthew Lev, and I'm the one who brokered the deal.
Well, we can give you more time, that's okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And you do have a question here, so that automatically gives you time from...
So I, my heart is in Space Coast. I have a home in Nard Island as well as in Orlando. I've been here for 13 years. I'm a licensed WPA captain as well, so my heart is to help to revitalize this area. So I reached out to the developer, Carl Davis, our employer, and told him that we had a good opportunity here.
Great, thank you. Member Nelson, you have a question?
Well, I had to, I did have a question.
We are located, based in Pompano.
Okay.
But we are very much interested in the area and are looking beyond this potential development as well as at other parcels.
Okay, great. That was, my question was, where was this exactly going to be? And I think you've answered my question. I think it'd be a great asset to that area, so it'd be interesting to see what you have in mind.
Well, I would very much appreciate if you would take a few moments of your time. I have a card for everyone that you can get on the website, and you can, you will readily see the type of product that we build.
Yes, sir. We've handed out a product of, from your website, I think it's your Doral.
Yes, Trevor gave the city place in Doral.
Yes, sir.
That's the one that I thought would be kind of in line with what we...
So the council has that?
I don't think it's representative of the type product that we would propose here, necessarily. Again, I think it's going to be more Dade-Broward-based, more futuristic, more contemporary.
Okay.
And I think this is a more traditional environment.
I think it might hurry things along for you. I know time is always of the essence. If you, in addition to meeting whoever on the council, we would have to do that individually unless you, well, have any discussion, we'd have to do it individually. But Ms. Musaka is our director of, and if you will set up a meeting with her, she can get the idea of what you're doing and so forth, and then either we will discuss it with you or she will.
Okay.
Give you some ways to start out, so...
To give each of you?
Yeah, sure. Come on, bring them right here, and I'll hand them out, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Peggy's dying to add something.
I just wanted to explain what I think Mr. Goodfellow was, wants to tell you, that this will require a future land use amendment to increase the density in this part of downtown from 20 units an acre to 30 units an acre, which would be consistent with the changes that were made in the downtown sub-district for the Launch Now project. And so I, staff suggested, because Mr. Goodfellow was doing his due diligence, that he perhaps would want to introduce that concept to council. That will have to be done as part of this, but otherwise, I'm not sure that this will require any public hearings necessarily unless they choose to go forward with a development agreement. But we'll be working with Mr. Goodfellow and Mr. Levine.
Okay, so they've already had a meeting with you, but you'll be taking it further.
Well, I haven't met with them, but the staff has kept me informed this one time.
Oh, whatever.
And, I'm only kidding. But we are, we are working with them, but they wanted to bring this forward to you, and staff is very supportive of this because we feel like this would be an excellent opportunity to look at some mixed use and kind of thing that we're trying to encourage.
Your Honor, I've met extensively with Trevor Trappegan as well, and we've done a lot of the groundwork.
Yes.
And it sounds very good.
We've met with Trevor, I've had numerous phone conversations with him, and we're working closely together.
Well, we would be glad to meet with you or if you wanted to come back, but right now, we're all in a position of, when we see, when we see more of the work you're doing with Peggy, that would be most appropriate. But thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, wait, one more question, sir. One more question.
Thank you. You'll get used to me.
Oh, come on.
Just a couple of questions. First of all, I appreciate you coming forward. I saw the rendition that you have and really like it for sure. I understand you're going to modify it a little bit, but that's fine. Just the idea that you have picked Titusville to put a major development like that is certainly very much appreciated, for sure. My question to you is, how much of a budget will you have for something like that, approximately?
I couldn't even begin to guess at a number. You mean in total development costs?
Yeah, what do you think you're going to be spending on this development?
Oh, easily 50, 60, 70 million dollars.
70 million dollars?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
In that range.
And your vision is to start by when? Once you do all your due diligence?
Our vision is to start as fast as possible.
That's usually the answer.
Of course, and finish as fast as we possibly can.
I've been in, like I said, I've been in this area, I've done extensive research. I've done all the ESRI reports as well as the site-to-do-business reports. We've looked in extensively, we've already made contacts with Blue Origin as well as made preliminary contacts with the Human Resources Department over at Boeing and things like that to see if there is a need for it. So our goal is to court that space, that, you know, that group there as well, and that was one of our main focuses on that, and we felt Titusville was a really good fit for it.
No, it's definitely a really good fit, and I appreciate you picking Titusville for sure, but you getting in contact with Blue Origin in one way, that's a smart deal because they, you know, they're bringing in a lot of engineers, a lot of professionals, and the configuration that you have is exactly what...
They will fit the niche for this market.
Exactly.
There's also several other aerospace industries that we work closely with, and, you know, like I said, I've been in this area for a long time, and as luck has it, a lot of the licensed captains are also NASA engineers and stuff as well, so you tend to meet a lot of very interesting people, so we've done our research.
Okay, you did allude to one thing that caught my interest. You said, after this, you're looking at other things in this area, in Titusville.
Yes, yes, some of which are in Cocoa.
No, no.
But we've identified, we've identified a lot of this.
I shouldn't have said that.
No, you should not have said that.
We've identified several parcels, and we're doing our...
In Titusville?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
As well as in the downtown area as well as in some other areas. So we have identified some other...
There's smaller development opportunities, but yes, we are looking at others.
Do as much as you can in Titusville.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Hope to see you soon. If you will come up, please, somebody, one of those nice young ladies or gentlemen?
I have two. All of them. Okay, I'm in numbers.
If they start singing. Please, name and address. My only one of you.
My name, just one, okay. My name is Lily Kyle. My address is 4320 Best Avenue, Titusville, Florida. These are, this is Tessa Robinson, Hannah Ward, Trevor Leeds, and Preston LaCasse. We are students at Eastern Florida State College, and we recently came up with a plan in one of our classes to construct, we just kind of wanted to get your feedback on it. It's for the environment to help plastic pollution specifically, mostly locally here in our lagoon. Our main rough plan was just to put some sort of netting system over storm drains or pipes just to catch the runoff, the stormwater runoff and plastic pollution. There are already certain companies like StormX that are already doing this successfully in Texas, also in Georgia, and in Australia. It's very popular to help plastic pollution. I'm not sure if you guys know about, anything about that, but we just wanted to hear some feedback on that, what you guys would think about that, and I'm sure if you want to add something.
I just wanted to add that we were focusing this on basically the Indian River and the Indian River Lagoon because I'm sure we've all known that the pollution's always been a problem in the Indian River Lagoon, just regular trash people throw out of their cars or that falls out of dumpsters or anything. Even if they're not intending to litter or anything, it always ends up in our waters. So we always thought that this could be a good way to protect our Indian River Lagoon, which I guess is like one of our main tourist attractions in Titusville now that the shuttle system is finished. So I feel like this would be like a good thing to do here to protect our, I guess, our main tourist attraction in Titusville.
Very good. Anyone else?
And like what she said about other companies that have already done this, Ike went ahead and did research to find out what companies did it and how it worked, and there was actually out in Washington DC, they did it, and it collected 3,300 pounds of pure trash, and it totally cleaned the river. So, I mean, this is a great idea, and we just wanted your feedback on it, like we said.
Anyone else speaking? Okay, you have some questions. Vice Mayor?
I gotta get used to that. I was waiting for Matt to talk. Speaking to you out there, when I saw you sitting there, I was very impressed with the fact that you were here, and then to find out what you, what your subject was, and now to hear you speak of your research and some of the data that you've come up with, I'm extremely impressed, and being that I know you guys, and, you know, it's just amazing to me. We just talked just a little while ago, Member Jordan, about we like to see our youth involved, and here you are. So with all that, the technicalities of all this that has to be done, I feel very certain we're going to defer over to perhaps Sean Stoffer or Solid Waste or somebody along those lines with the expertise, but I've got to tell you, coming from the council, I'm terribly impressed that you guys are here with such an outstanding idea, and it's not just one you threw out there. You've seen it done, you've seen it work, and you've searched it out, and I'm proud to sit here and look at you out there. So thank you for being here, and thank you for not just being here, for coming up with a real thought and a real solution. Thank you.
Member Nelson?
Well, my suggestion was going to be to have them address the Titusville Environmental Commission and let them come back to us. Maybe the City Manager could make that happen?
Absolutely.
And then, then when you guys graduate, we can sign you up for the TEC.
Titusville Environmental Commission. Member Jordan?
Oh, I gotta press the button for sure. Don't I know you?
Yeah, I live on this...
You're my neighbor, right? Okay.
Ah-ha.
That's all I was saying. I was looking at him, I was like, I don't know.
I'm really impressed with you all, you know, you came professionally. I thought you were still in high school, actually.
We are.
Oh, that's why you look so young.
Did I do that?
Oh, you knew that?
I pulled the camera back.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, for sure. You know, I think you need to let other young people know that this council is definitely open to young people, ideas. In order for us to flourish, we really need your ideas. We do not have all the right ideas or right decisions to make. We do not have all the right ideas or right decisions to make. We, we need your input, and because you all are millennials, look how he walk over here. I like what you're saying. But I, you know, just please, keep coming back with ideas. This council, I believe, with the personalities that we have here, we're just definitely open to, to seeing young people thrive and be part of this community and, and help us grow this community. So well done, all of you all, for sure.
Member Stokoe.
This makes me so happy, again, like, I'm just thoroughly impressed. So just a couple of questions from you guys. You guys, what class are you guys in right now over at the college?
We're in a speech class.
It's a public speaking class at Eastern Florida.
So how did you come up with this project for a speech class?
We kind of became interested in the Indian River Lagoon specifically, just because of the current state and everything.
The project itself was to create our own business or some type of innovation, and we just did research, and this is what we came up with, and we just thought this would be a good idea to propose to you guys as well.
So as part of the class, do you, or is everybody having to kind of propose an idea and go to council, or you guys just took this upon yourself? Way to go!
Sarah, please don't give me...
I know, I know, I was just, I was just curious.
It was like a Shark Tank business plan idea, so he gives us like money for like, whoever's gets the most money. And like, some kids made like a lipstick that they were making, some kids made a bake shop. And just us locally being here, we thought it'd be kind of like a boost to do something that could help us locally as citizens of Titusville.
I, I, I thought you guys were in a biology class or science class. I work at Eastern Florida as an advisor, so that's why I was kind of curious to see, and to hear this from a speech class. I'm just thoroughly impressed with you guys. I do have another question. So part of the research that you did on this, when you were looking at other places, did you by any chance, and it's okay if you don't, have numbers on as far as like budget or pricing or how that worked?
Well, the, the instance of this we found in Washington DC, it was just for their particular river, I can't remember the exact name of the river, I apologize.
It's okay.
But it was like three thousand dollars for that one instally, well, it was multiple pipes, was for the installation for that river, to clean up that river, and it worked wonderfully for that river. Like, there's so much pollution in it beforehand, and it was just completely cleared out after they went through the program.
Great, great. And I think, yeah, just like Member Nelson said, go to the Environmental Commission, yeah, go through them, they'll help work out some kinks, and maybe you guys can start out your own little legacy here. I'm, I'm just thoroughly impressed with you guys. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, but that's how we originally decided to come here, is because we did contact somebody, I think we started out with city, and then we went to like stormwater. And they told us that it actually, there can be some restrictions on covering certain like storm drains and stuff here, so that's why we mostly came here to propose, just to kind of see, because they said that most of them could only be used on state roads because of that, because of the regulations, so.
Yeah, the lady we called said that they had it on state roads, but I don't know if you guys have seen it, but I haven't seen it anyway, so it's just, we decided to come here to see if we could make that happen somehow.
So, so as a suggestion for your group, Mr. Kevin Cook's sitting right there, he's our city engineer and director of public work, so stormwater falls under him. So probably as part of your research is maybe take, get a meeting with Kevin and the stormwater folks to find out what we currently have, which would be a good start point for you, and then see what we, you know, some of our shortfalls that we've already identified, and then maybe we could fill those gaps with some things. So Kevin, you got anything to add?
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest. We do have four baffle boxes, which is kind of an upgraded version of a netting system. We have one installed right behind City Hall, we can show you it. We have, we open them up, our trucks clean them out. We have three pre-cons this week on three more. We'd be happy to show you a local company in Barrett Island that builds our baffle boxes, and we can introduce you to the next version of the technology you're looking at, help you out.
Make, make sure you have contact numbers for them, please. I don't see any more lights. I, everybody said everything already, so all I can say is, go ahead and, and get her done.
Thanks.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next item is consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Are there any consent agenda items that the city council would like to pull? Clerk, are there any cards for any of the consent agenda items? I'll read the, the A through D consent agenda items for the record. There are no resolutions, so this will just be a standard vote. Consent agenda item eight A, approve the FY two thousand eighteen year-end budget amendments. Consent agenda item B, approve change order number one to contract SB one eight B zero three eight in the amount of nineteen thousand fifty-five dollars to JB Lawn Controls Incorporated of Titusville, Florida, to add the Riverfront Park to the existing contract for lawn services and authorize the city manager to execute the change order. Consent agenda item C, eight C, approve the purchase of a two thousand nineteen Solid Waste Automated Side Loader in the amount of two hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred forty-three dollars and fifty cents to Next Train Truck Center of Orlando to replace an existing truck as, as improved in the FY nineteen budget. Additionally, approve the associated budget amendments providing additional funds necessary for the purchase. Consent agenda item eight D, approve change order number one to contract CN one eight B zero five two issued to Massey General Contractor Incorporated of Port Orange, Florida, for additional asphalt tonnage in the amount of thirty-one thousand six hundred nineteen dollars and six cents, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to approve consent of item A through D.
Move to approve consent agenda A, B, C, and D.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Not hearing any, all, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like signed, passes unanimously. Ordinance is a second reading. You have none, ordinance first reading. Mr. City Manager.
This is item ten A, which is ordinance number fifty-four two thousand eighteen relating to landscape yards. Ordinance number fifty-four two thousand eighteen, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending chapter thirty development standards, sections thirty, three thirty-one applicability, thirty, three thirty-two required landscape yards, thirty, three thirty-three exemptions, and thirty, three thirty-seven permitted uses within the landscape buffer yard, establishing that required landscape yards and subdivisions are to be located in a separate tract or common area, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and effective date and incorporation into the code.
This is your first reading. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled for December eleventh two thousand eighteen. The Plan and Zoning Commission will consider this ordinance on December fifth two thousand eighteen. Once again, this is your first reading for ordinance fifty-four two thousand eighteen. Ms. Busaka is available, should you have any questions on this ordinance.
Any questions for council? I see none. I guess we can just go to the next item. There's no vote necessary on this one. Next item, sir?
Yes, sir. Next item is item ten B, which is ordinance number fifty-five two thousand eighteen, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances relating to business license renewal dates by amending chapter eleven licenses and business regulations to clarify partial year business tax receipt renewal dates, specifically amending section eleven thirty-three, when due, and chapter twenty-two vehicles for hire, to amend the permit renewal deadline to be September thirtieth of each year, specifically amending section twenty-two sixty-two issuance duration and annual fee, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date and incorporation into the code.
The second reading and public hearing is scheduled for December eleventh two thousand eighteen. The Plan and Zoning Commission will consider this ordinance on December fifth two thousand eighteen. This is the first reading of ordinance fifty-five two thousand eighteen. Ms. Busaka is available to answer any questions you may have regarding this ordinance.
Any questions for Ms. Busaka? I see no lights, so you got off easy tonight, Peg. Next item is old business. We have no old business. Number twelve is new business. Mr. City Manager, do you want to introduce that, or just...
Yes, sir. Update city council appointments to serve on outside agencies. Members of the city council are appointed to serve on various outside agencies to represent the interests of the citizens in the city of Titusville. Attached in your packets, your current roster, and we are here to take notes as you update your, your positions.
Everybody jumped in. Firstly, I'd like to handle it kind of like we did the, the last time, and is, if anybody wants to change any of their items, let me know by punching in. And the first one is Vice Mayor.
Wrong side, normally over there. I agree with what you said, Mayor, and that's where I would like to have a start. Personally, I think that as I look up and down the council, generally speaking, we are in our, going in our third year, and I think that being on, for my example, the Parks and Rec Board, I feel like there's been a lot accomplished, a lot of communication between us and them. I feel like it's gone very well. I would not think that wise for me suddenly to not be on that board anymore and start over, so I don't know how everybody else feels about their boards, but I feel like a lot's been done with ours.
Okay, so you're going to keep the one you have?
Yes, sir, if at all possible.
Okay. Member Stokoe.
Yep, I guess similar. I, I would just like to stay on the Space Coast League of Cities, Florida League of Cities. That's my only request, other than I'm very flexible, and I don't think, I, I don't know if the Space Coast Economic Development Commission is still needed. I, I have not, I don't think they've had any meetings this year, so I just wanted to put that out there as well.
Space Coast EDC has had meetings.
Man, this is, this is a second one.
Okay, I'm sorry. They haven't hit the button. I'm, I'm very happy staying with the Space Coast EDC. The one thing that I would like to maybe talk to Mr. Jordan about is the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization, only because it's right across from your place of employment. They meet, TPO meets Ed and Vera.
I always had his place...
I saw this here.
Well, isn't...
Ed and Vera, that's where my school is, my business is in Titusville.
Oh, okay. Then I take it back.
Yeah, you can, you can keep that.
I thought if you were going to Ed and Vera, I'm fine, you could go ahead and go across the street.
We've got to find you something here, so...
Well, you know, I'm fine with what you all have, for sure. I've got enough boards, for sure. Actually, I was thinking, if I'm permitted to talk.
Sure. Follow.
City Manager tells me this. Okay, I'm kind of interested in, in the Florida League of Cities, if Mr. Johnson don't mind me being the alternate for that. It's, it's totally up to you, if you still want to do it, I'm, I'm fine.
No, that's not a problem with me, that's fine. But of course Sarah is the primary on it, so...
Yeah, she's, she's the primary, but sometimes I may need to relieve her. Honestly, and Councilmember Nelson talked about this, I, I think something needs to happen with the SEDC, because they have not met in a couple of years or so, and really nothing has happened. I'm not even sure this should even be on your list of things. Jolynn's still going to do the EDC. I'm good with just that one, to be honest with you.
I'll follow up on your question, though. Mr. City Manager, do they have any meetings anymore, or...
No, sir.
And can you see if they're...
We, we have checked with them.
Are they...
They, they have no direction. They, they apparently still have money in the budget. They're not meeting, they, they haven't passed their board on to the next board or nominated any board members. So probably a recommendation of council is that these liaison positions be eliminated, and should SEDC reform, I can attend those meetings on your, on your behalf.
We have a consensus on council, we don't really need a vote on that, unless you'd like one, City Manager.
As long as everybody goes north-south, I'm good.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Sure.
I think I was doing Florida League, but there's a Space Coast League also?
She's, she's...
They're, they're combined.
Are they combined?
Mm-hmm. So you, I guess you would be then alternate for both of them as well.
Okay, I, I think two is enough for me.
Well, that's a wrong... You can start out that way.
I know, I know, I'm just saying.
So you'll take both of those alternates?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that.
Okay, and you're going to keep the, the TPO?
I'll take the TPO.
Okay. You could, you could, if you wanted, give him that, and you could take the alternate. Either way, he'd have something actually to go to.
Oh, come on, man, I've got enough to go to, for sure. What'd you say, the TPO?
Yeah. That's the one she was talking about.
It's Ed and Vera.
I don't want to do that. I don't want to do that. No, let her, let her keep that, that's fine.
Come on, Robert. I don't know the EDC, but they meet.
Okay. How, how often does a TPO meet?
Once a month.
Oh, God. All right, I'll check. I don't even, I don't even see it.
It's...
One, two, three, four down, five down?
No, no, one, two, three down, three down.
Oh, right here, I'm sorry, Space Coast Transportation. So Mayor, you're on this?
Yes, sir.
And so you're going to stay on it?
Yeah, but there are two voting members on that one.
Oh, okay, I, I didn't mind being the alternate, but if you want me to, I can do that.
No.
Huh?
Thank you.
Would that please you?
Oh, I'd be tickled.
That you would?
It's up to you.
All right, that's enough now, I'm not volunteering for anything else.
I'll volunteer to be the alternate.
That's what I want to be.
Is everybody in agreement?
Yes.
So let me just summarize for council what, what I believe has happened. For the Florida League of Cities and the Space Coast League of Cities, the, the actual member will be Member Stokoe, and the alternate will be Member Jordan.
Correct.
Space Coast Transportation and Planning, Mayor Johnson and Member Jordan, and there, you will have to appoint an alternate, Jolynn.
She said she'll do that.
She said she would do that.
But if you want to, I can do that.
For North Brevard Commission on Park and Recs, Vice Mayor Diesel and Member Nelson as the alternate. The Space Coast Economic Development Commission will not be provided a liaison, should they reactivate, the city manager will, will serve in your stead. Economic Development Commission of Florida Space Coast, Member Nelson as the primary, and Vice Mayor Diesel as the alternate. North Brevard Economic Development Zone, Mayor Johnson as the primary, and Member Stokoe as the alternate.
And what's your next to do with Mr. Jordan?
I, I would rather change the TPO.
You can't serve in two positions. You're already on that board.
No, I'm not.
Oh, you're not either?
No, I, I actually...
Oh, no, I, I was kidding, at, at that time. That's generally, actually, I'm a...
You're the primary.
Well, yes, I'm the primary.
You're the primary. So I, I don't mind being the, the secondary, if you're there, I'm not...
Member Stokoe, do you mind giving that second?
If you want it.
Okay, if I'm the secondary, can you take the TPO?
If you want it, you can have it. Nope. That's, I, I worked during that time, I can't...
Now, they do meet during your, when you work.
Yes, so that's why, that's why that's difficult for me to do that one.
That's fine, that's fine.
So you're going to take the, the alternate on North Brevard Economic Development Zone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that'll be fine. Although I have to tell you, you, you took a good one, because I, as you know, I rarely miss it, so...
Well, no, I...
I have not attended one, because your attendance is stellar.
As you know, also because you've been on it for a long time, since inception, huh? It is a very, very important board.
It's a very good board, yeah. Sorry to leave it, but I had to, so, such is life.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, you have that all done, City Manager, then?
We do. Thanks for making that painless.
No problem. Petitions and requests from the public. Is there anybody who'd like to speak? You don't, you're here all this time, and you're not gonna even tell us who you are?
Yeah, who are you?
Who's here last week?
Oh, is that Ms. Diana? Oh, hi, hi again. Mayor's Report, you have my written report. Anybody from council have anything?
Yes, sir, I do.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Very short. Actually, this was supposed to be at the last report, and I got caught up in all the Parks and Rec stuff. I did a ride-along in Solid Waste. I think I've, I know I talked to City Manager about that. And got an opportunity to ride on one of the side loader trucks, and I was with John Kelly. I told him I'd say his name, and then last time we went, I forgot to say it. Unbelievably outstanding. Just, I couldn't believe how great it was. I didn't know, like, he'd stop, and he'd get out of the truck, and I'm like, you know, where are you going? This is one of my disabled customers. So he goes, and he gets the trash and brings it over. I didn't know that, the things you don't know. Then we're going along, and, you know, some of these, you know, four- and five-year-old kids come running out of the house calling his name. I don't think we realized the impact that some of our city workers have. I know I didn't. In, in the communities. He's been working at same, he works the same route for the last eight years, and he's been with us, I believe, for seventeen years. I could not been, have been more impressed. And the surprise to me was, after about an hour and a half, about how I started to feel carsick. Because you go and you stop. You go and you stop. You go and you stop. And then they take the side loader, and they pick up the, the cans, and they bang, bang, bang. I want to tell you what, that was pretty, pretty tough stuff for eight hours, and I did it for like, three. So I just wanted to kind of give a shout out, and just so impressed with the, knowing where to get out and, and help with the disabled, et cetera. And they look forward to seeing them. So, my honor, and thank you to Solid Waste, and I appreciate it.
Very nice, sir. Thank you. Member Jordan?
Of course, I, I want to thank you all for welcoming me to the council. This is gonna be fun, I'm gonna tell you. Just hold on. I definitely have an opinion about everything, for sure. But in all seriousness, I, I think we're gonna be able to do some good things here, have a little fun, but also be, you know, be serious when we need to be serious, for sure. I did a ride-along also while my wife was in Georgia, and she didn't know it, from eight to four o'clock in the morning with the police department. And if we just experience what the police department experience every day, standing in the gap between the good and the bad, I mean, I, I think normal citizen would be very pleased with what our, our police department do. They, they are very professional. They always have our back, and they deserve our praise, for sure. So, a shout-out to them, for sure.
I totally agree with you. I've done it several times, and it's, it's always very interesting.
It's very, yeah.
Very informative as well.
The, there is one thing, and I, and I told, I can't remember who I was talking to, I think it was Jesse. But as a business owner in the industrial park, we have a challenge. And I would like for staff to, to look at how we are able to use our property in the industrial area. Right now, if I'm to build a structure on my property, it has to be fifty feet from the back property line, and thirty-two feet from the side property line. That's ridiculous. I end up spending a lot of money to get it changed, to build a structure on my property. It's, it's a lot of property wasted. So I certainly would like for staff to look at the requirements for setbacks in the Space Coast Industrial Park.
Just so you are fully informed, that is in the City of Titusville, so what you're asking would be the City of Titusville, but it's actually owned by the county. Do you agree with that?
No.
Oh, the one you're in is...
The one I'm in, yeah. Yeah, no, this is city property, for sure.
Got it, got it. You're right.
Yeah, I, I paid the money to the city, so.
You're absolutely right. I, I thought you were talking about the other one, which we would still do the, the other work on it, but they, they actually own the property.
Right. So I, I don't know how that works. Do we need approval from council members to have the city manager do something, or?
Yes.
So, yeah.
Yes.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we ask the city manager to have his staff to look at the setback requirements in the industrial area for recommended lessen footage, if that makes any sense.
Sure does.
It does? Okay. Need a second.
I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? I hear none?
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. Okay. Yes, ma'am, you go. Right ahead, Member Nelson.
Okay, this is going to be very short. And I just wanted to say it while we're all here. Congratulations to Member Diesel, who is now the principal of Legacy Academy.
Aw, thank you.
I can't get over a big guy like him going, "Aw."
Aw, yeah. I did not prepare for that.
So, we're, he's gonna be working hard the next year.
Say it's a board member.
Yes, yes. And I just also...
Say it's a board member.
I will not be working as hard. And a thank you to Lowe's, who is back from the Panhandle, where they have been out working on the hurricane relief. And they're back working on the Carter House this Saturday. So, thank you to them.
Very good. Anyone have anything else? If not, our mission...
Hang on, sir. I got...
Oh, oh, sorry.
Too quick.
I want to make sure we get out of here in an hour.
Yes, sir. For the city's manager's report, there's no action items, but I do have to have you make some changes to your schedule. First change is, on Thursday, prior to your Conservation Land Use Wetland Workshop, we've added an executive session for the IAFF Union. That'll be at 4:00 PM on Thursday. Council approved a CBG, DBG special meeting on the 15th of January. There now is a scheduling conflict with the Brevard delegation meeting that evening. Your alternate day was the 29th of January at 5:30. Is that acceptable to council, to go with the alternate date?
It is to me.
It is for me.
Okay, we'll make that happen. And third, the, the weather's expected to be pretty cold in the next few days. So I just wanted to update everybody that there is a cold weather shelter in North Brevard. It's located at 435 North Singleton Avenue in Titusville. It's the North Brevard Coalition of Human Services. They will start operating as soon as the weather dips below forty degrees. Their operating hours of the shelter are 9:30 PM, and they'll close at 8:00 AM, once the weather reaches below forty. So that's information we want to get out to the citizens. And that is all my updates, and subject to your questions.
Very good.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is that cold shelter information, is, can that be available on our website or an email?
It's on.
On, it's also on Channel 13.
Okay.
This comes from the emergency management.
Okay.
So it's, it's in all public media information. As to where all of the cold weather shelters are in Brevard County.
Okay. And then, if it's not on our social media pages potentially, and then Sharon...
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. City Attorney, anything? Not hearing anything. I think we have completed our mission. I'll call this meeting adjourned.